Coco, Coco, Coco. Look, he fell down. His face.
Call to order Public Property and Parks Committee meeting. Roll call please.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Present.
Present. Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Present. Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Alanson?
Present.
All right, first on the agenda.
Okay, we have an RFP update from Attorney James Lamanna regarding 34A Essex Street and 78 Rockdale Street.
Good evening, councilors. With respect to 34A Essex Street, we did go out to build this building is a building that needs to be torn down as a lodge tree growing through the roof. It's not structurally sound. Unfortunately, we did not receive any bids on this property. We had reason to believe that there was a nonprofit that was interested in doing a tear down. I think they had some concerns about the availability of funding. The purchasing department did receive a call from a developer today that expressed if he had known nobody else was going to bid, he probably would have bid. So I think speaking with the purchasing agent today, it would make sense to rebid this property with the hopes that we get a bid on the second go around. Otherwise, I think ISD was just going to have to knock the building down at considerable expense. So the ideal world is it gets sold and the developer knocks it down.
Okay. So we'll take that separate as a vote, Essex Street.
I would recommend that because there's a second recommendation on Rockdale.
Okay.
A different recommendation.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Lamanna?
Madam Chair, because I'm the ward counselor of this area, I'm very, very familiar about this situation. So do I have to make a motion to rebid?
Right, correct. A motion to rebid, and I'll work with Tim Leonard to put it out after the -- well, I'll speak with the purchasing agent as it makes sense to wait until the new year to put it out to bid, just give developers time. But it would go out to bids sooner rather than later, as it has been an eyesore on the neighborhood for far too long.
All right, so we have a motion.
A motion to rebid 34A Essex Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Alanson?
Yes.
With respect to 78 Rockdale, this is a little bit different. 78 Rockdale is assessed at over $550,000. We received four or five bids for this property. The high bid came in at $200,000. Speaking with the building commissioner, he just believes that $200,000 is artificially low, so does Chris Gator, our city assessor. There is a problem with a structural wall in the basement, and there is a hole in the roof. But Brett Bennett indicated he thought that the repairs would be no more than $100,000,[315.33][315.33]$150,000. That seemed that where the city taxpayers are not getting their bang for their buck. Speaking with Counsel Meany, this is in Ward 1, he had asked that this public property committee consider rebidding that property with a hope of getting something closer to the fair market value. And when this went out, I thought this was a great opportunity for the city to realize closer to half a million dollars to go into the general fund, and the bids didn't come in to reflect that.
All right. Anybody have any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to repost.
Second. Okay, roll call.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Alanson?
Yes.
All right, next.
Hey. We have a request from Daniel Dean to place a Toys for Tots box in the foyer for the next three weeks.
What's the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Next, we have a discussion regarding the multi-service center, RFP.
So as this council knows, we have been trying to sell the multi-service center going well on over six, seven years. There were some issues with financing at one point. There was also some issues with the soil being contaminated. The city worked with Mass Development, and we received the funding to clean up the Liberty Street parking lot so that the property is no longer contaminated and that it could be built upon. We've got a developer that's expressed some interest in purchasing the property, keeping Brother's Table as a tenant on the first floor, and having affordable housing at the Liberty Street lot. And we're looking to have this to go out to bid again, hopefully for the final time to secure Brother's Table for a long-time home and create some affordable housing opportunities for Lynn residents.
All right. I do have a few questions regarding this. Can we add in there on the lease agreement, how many years will they keep My Brother's Table is one question I have been asked?
By state law, we can put a condition on in the lease that it would be for 30 years. So up to 30 years is the maximum that we could put in a condition. So if that's the will to the council, that certainly could be added to the RFP.
Okay. Another one was rent increase. What will they -- when they set the rent, are they going to keep going up on the rents that they're going to try to push My Brother's Table out, that they can't afford it? So we're basically -- that was the main concern for the employees at My Brother's Table. How are we going to control the rent increase on that property?
The council could put a condition in there that the rent cannot go up more than a certain percentage on an annual basis or over a five-year period, whatever percentage they would think is reasonable. I would think anything under 3% would be perhaps acceptable, but that would be something that could be added to the RFP as well, just to ensure that obviously there are some landlords that have been buying properties here in the city, and tenants have seen their rents in many cases going up to a point where they just couldn't possibly afford. So having some language in there that a successful bidder, whoever that may be, cannot use rent increases to try to force out Brother's Table is certainly appropriate.
All right. Another one was with the agreement, the lease agreement, if they were to sell that property, does that lease agreement stay with My Brother's Table that, let's say, for instance, they have it there for 30 years, whether they sell that building a month after they buy it?
That could be, absolutely could be appropriate condition to put on the deed that the Brother's Table lease will run with the property, that anyone purchasing the property would see it filed at the registered deeds, that they're assuming the Brother's Table lease for the up to 30 years, depending upon when and if the property is ever sold.
All right. And there's one last thing, maintenance of the building. Who is going to be responsible for the maintenance of the building was another question I was asking regarding this. How do we put that in?
That also can be added to the RFP, that whoever the successful bidder is, is responsible for the maintenance of the building. You know, whether that includes custodial work or that, I defer to the council if they want to get into that. But certainly if there's any major repairs that are needed, that could be language in the deed, that it would not fall back upon the tenant. That's my understanding, there's only one tenant in the building right now, it's My Brother's Table.
I'm done. Anybody else have any other questions? Counsel Lapierre?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question, Attorney Lamanna, on the process as it stands right now, like sale pending, is it purchase and sale, is it closing? What's the timeline of this sale?
So it has to go out for a request for proposals where anybody would be interested. Just because one bidder, one entity has expressed an interest does not necessarily mean that it's going to go to that entity, similar to 34A Essex Street, just because someone called the purchasing department today and said if they had known no one was going to bid, they were going to bid. That does not mean in any way that they're guaranteed the second go around to get it. But the more conditions that are in the RFP to protect the lone tenant and reference the existing deed, and I know the RFP that has been repeated in the past puts in the RFP and in any potential deed, the language that's in the current deed with My Brother's Table about responsibilities, the city's responsibilities and the like.
Just follow-up question is, I have yet to see the lease agreement, so I would like to see that before I vote on it. Is that possible to have in our packets? Because I don't think we've seen that yet.
The current lease agreement with My Brother's Table has expired. It's been expired for a number of years.
I'm sorry, the RFP, did we see the RFP at one point when it was first advertised?
It has not, well, it was provided to you over the summer, and the council had voted to advertise. We got some feedback from My Brother's Table that they wanted to have some discussions internally and with city officials, which has occurred. So that's the working document that was approved over the summer. Obviously, there's some tinkering that needs to be done based upon some votes tonight with respect to the 30 years, with respect to maintenance obligations and the like. So a final version is not before you tonight, but there was a version that was approved over the summer that I know Brother's Table had seen and the council had approved.
And do we know if we have invited the community or advocates of My Brother's Table to be part of the participation of either the RFP process to date or a neighborhood meeting, other than the sort of the director of My Brother's Table or the board, but more of the volunteer base, have they been privy to the ongoing sort of leasing and RFP process at all?
I know there've been discussions between the mayor and some city councils, including Counsel Chakoudas, with Brother's Table. I do not know if there's volunteers.
Extended or outreach more?
And I don't, I can't speak what Brother's Table has done as far as notifying their volunteers about this. But it's certainly been something that we've been talking about for a number of years, going back to Mayor McGee's tenure, about a desire to make sure that Brother's Table has a permanent home at that site. And also, just to be quite frank, the city has a terrible track record of maintaining buildings just because of funding limitations, and nonprofits have some ability to fundraise that might be able to make it a lot easier to rehab this building and get it back up into good repair, because it does have good bones.
Yeah, no, I completely agree, and I would agree with the council's contingencies, if you will, and attachments of conditions, stipulations for the RFP. I just feel like it's a little rushed, and I would need a little more time. So, I mean, I would let others ask questions, but I'm inclined to do a motion to table.
But Attorney Lamanna, if we put these stipulations in, we're not voting on the RFP, that has to come through the full council, correct, when it is completely finished with these stipulations? Is it a public hearing, or is it just through public property?
If the council votes for the RFP to be issued, it would be issued.
With the stipulation?
With the stipulations that have been added tonight. Yeah, but as far as the ultimate award of the project, just as you did tonight, you ordered a rebid for 34A Essex and Rockdale, this does not mean that the high bidder is automatically going to get this property. The council can look at what's the bid that came in, does it meet My Brother's Table's concerns? If Brother's Table came in and said, I saw this bid, I don't like sections two, four, and eight, it doesn't work for us. This council would be absolutely free to look at the bid as it came in and say, we're not going to award or not award a rebid or possibly look. Originally, we were talking about doing a RFP just for a lease for My Brother's Table, but that doesn't necessarily solve the maintenance and building problems that have plagued that site for years.
Because I know we did have meetings during the summer. There were things we did have to change on it. It fell, everything fell through, we didn't go forward with it. So basically, it's the same RFP we had before. We did sit with My Brother's Table and go over a few issues that they had concerns with. Did we end up changing those concerns?
I'm saying those have been resolved, but I do want to be honest with you. My Brother's Table nor the city will really be able to anticipate any problems until the RFP goes out and the bids come in. That's when you can look and see what the proposer wants to do, and does it raise questions and concerns from My Brother's Table. Given the long partnership with the city and My Brother's Table, I would think that if whoever the bidder is, Jim Lamanna, Inc., comes in, wants to buy it and put affordable housing on Liberty Street and be a landlord for My Brother's Table, if there's parts of that RFP that don't work for the operational needs of My Brother's Table, I would fully expect this council to reject the bid. But that's really when the meat is on the bones, so to speak, is when whichever company puts a bid together and says, this is what I'm proposing to do.
So with keep tabling something like this, we're never going to get anywhere with the property. We need to move forward, and when a bid does come in, that is when the council can turn around and basically say, no, we don't want this, or this, they can change it, correct?
Well, ultimately, it's in your discretion whether you want to table or not table, but I'm suggesting that when the real evaluation, is this good for My Brother's Table? And I think this is a major component of every RFP that we put out for this site is to make sure it works for My Brother's Table. We won't necessarily know that until the RFP is issued and the bids come in.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to take up all the time, but as I understand it, there's probably a potential for only one bid at this point, and we're making it more stringent on the RFP this evening and re-advertising it. What's the likelihood of getting multiple bids on something that was less stringent all summer long that we only got the one bid for?
We've gone out multiple times. My Brother's Table has been a successful bidder twice. Once, there was a financing issue where the deal couldn't go through as it was advertised. The second, both, to be frank, both times was a financing issue. A mortgage company was uncomfortable, my understanding, financing the project. So there are a lot of restrictions in this RFP. The original RFPs that went out, that was before COVID and before the Lynn shelter was moving, whoever was going to buy this building originally was obligated to house My Brother's Table and the Lynn shelter. The only floor that could, the upper floors would be the only ones that you could really have any wiggle room or playroom. So it's always been very restricted that the city has shown a commitment that this is a location, this is a need of the city to have a soup kitchen servicing its most needy people in that location downtown. So it's never been the Wild West, so to speak. Anybody could bid and knock it down and put a 10, a 20-story building, a 10-story building. I'm not going to speak for My Brother's Table, whether they'd be interested in bidding again. They've bid in the past. They've partnered with other people in the past. So there are nonprofits out there that do partner together.
But again, the timeline of which we're speaking, today's November 25th, December 9th, when do you expect to get this if we approved it tonight? Would this be an RFP that you'd get to work on tomorrow, or would this be more of a December project for you?
My understanding, the mayor's office, in conjunction with the purchasing department, have been working on this, and they've got pretty close to a final document. We anticipated some suggestions tonight that have been made by some of the councilors here, and if they haven't been added in, they're ready to be added in forthwith.
I'm not worried about council input or Brother's Table input, I'm worried about resident input. That's my charge, right? I'm worried about civic engagement. I'm worried about a process that we look at something on one night and approve it, and nobody knows what we approved. So that's kind of the lens I'm focused on, is did the neighborhood get their questions answered prior to tonight? And I think that answers no.
I can't, I can't speak.
Right. That's not your role, but.
I will say, I have talked to somebody at My Brother's Table. We're on the phone today. I know Counsel Natasha, sorry, my mind's not working. We did both speak with her. This is basically what I got out of them, was stipulations that they want changed. Again, the council does not, when the bid comes in, whether it's January, February, does not have to approve it. But this is something that's been lingering for quite a few years now, and we really need to get this property maintained, up and running the correct way. It's just been, it's been horrible. We need some maintenance down there, we need a lot of work done, and we need somebody that's going to go in and actually do it.
Yeah, no, I know this is no slight on you. I know you've put in the time, effort, you've handled a lot of the lion's share of this, and I applaud you in the ward. And to that note, we are going to have a council-elect, so Counsel Paez should be also at the table, I think, you know, for these discussions, because it could end up being a big part of her as a ward counselor in that area, so.
Yeah, it's actually the Ward 4 councilor's area.
Oh, it's Ward 4.
It's Ward 4.
Yeah. You're not going anywhere. Okay. Well, thank you for your role.
Any other questions? It's not a public hearing, so I had to have the audience ask questions, I'm sorry. What is the wish of the committee?
I make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Alanson?
Yes.
All right. Any other business?
No other business.
All right, what's the wish of the committee?
What's it, Jerry?
All right, second?
Second.
[Crosstalk]
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ways and Means Committee meeting Tuesday, November 25th, 2025. Madam Clark, I call the meeting to order. Please roll call.
Counsel Net?
Present.
Present. Counsel Hogan?
Yes, present.
Present. Counsel Chakoudas?
Absent.
Counsel Chakoudas is present. Counsel Walsh?
Present.
Present. Counsel Field?
Present.
Present.
Please read transfers.
Okay, we have $40,000 to care of dog expense to fund anticipated expenses for the remainder of FY '26.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Certified, please.
Okay, we have $20,000 to the burn grant, from the burn grant, to the police department to fund crowd control equipment.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes.
Certified, please.
Okay, we have $20,000 to the burn grant, from the burn grant, to the police department to fund crowd control equipment.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. $25,565.40 for the Mass Haya grant to the school department for North Shore youth to gain work experience.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. And we have ordered pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Lynn Police Department hereby accepts a gift from the Pay Your Own Charitable Trust in the amount of $300 to be used for their upcoming community holiday party.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call please.
Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Field?
Yes.
Yes. May I emergency for all of these? No emergency. What is the wish committee?
Motion, adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
And we have ordered pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift of $2,000 to purchase two park benches at Goldfish Pond.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
And we have ordered pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift of $2,000 to purchase two park benches at Goldfish Pond.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
$25,565.40 for the Mass Hire Grant to the School Department for North Shore Youth to Gain Work Experience.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
$268,088.43 to the School Department for the FY '26 HVAC and Heat Pump Training at LVTI.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Orders, please.
We have ordered pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Lynn Police Department hereby accepts a gift from the Pay-Own Charitable Trust in the amount of $300 to be used for their upcoming community holiday party.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
And we have ordered pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift of $2,000 to purchase two park benches at Goldfish Pond.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
No emergency to all of these? No emergency. What is the wish committee?
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
No.
We don't need them, okay, good. Communications.
We have no communications.
Public hearings.
We have no public hearings.
Public hearings to be set down.
We have no hearings to set down.
Rolling right along here, huh? Committees licensing councillor Field.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have unanimous vote by our committee. I make a motion to approve that.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Public property, councillor Chakoudas.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Ways and Means, councillor Net.
Mr. President, al d'humain, this vote of the committee, I make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
It was seconded. The clerk, please read the transfers.
Here we have certified orders, $20,000, the Burn grant to the police department to fund the crowd control equipment, $25,565.40 for the Mass Hire Grant to the School Department for North Shore Youth to gain work experience, $268,088.43 to the School Department, the FY '26 HVAC and Heat Pump Training at LVTI. The following orders: Order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Lynn Police Department hereby accepts a gift from the Pay-Own Charitable Trust in the amount of $300 to be used for their upcoming community holiday party. And Order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift of $2,000 to purchase two park benches at Goldfish Pond.
Okay. It's the wish of the council. We motion approve. Second, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Councillor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Aminy.
Yes.
Absent. Councillor Mejimadre.
Present.
Present. Councillor Net.
Present.
Present. Councillor Walsh.
Present.
We all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Keep in mind, Mr. President, the Horahan family.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Do we not accept the minutes from the last meeting?
No.
We don't need them, okay, good. Communications.
We have no communications.
Public hearings.
We have no public hearings.
Public hearings to be set down.
We have no hearings to set down.
Rolling right along here, huh? Committees licensing councillor Field.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have unanimous vote by our committee. I make a motion to approve that.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Public property, councillor Chakoudas.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Ways and Means, councillor Net.
Mr. President, al d'humain, this vote of the committee, I make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
It was seconded. The clerk, please read the transfers.
Here we have certified orders, $20,000, the Burn grant to the police department to fund the crowd control equipment, $25,565.40 for the Mass Hire Grant to the School Department for North Shore Youth to gain work experience, $268,088.43 to the School Department, the FY '26 HVAC and Heat Pump Training at LVTI. The following orders: Order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Lynn Police Department hereby accepts a gift from the Pay-Own Charitable Trust in the amount of $300 to be used for their upcoming community holiday party. And Order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift of $2,000 to purchase two park benches at Goldfish Pond.
Okay. It's the wish of the council. We motion approve. Second, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Councillor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Aminy absent. Councillor Mejimadre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes. No emergency on that, councillor Net, right? Okay. We had some old business, I think, councillor Chakoudas.
Yeah. A motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second on it.
Second.
Just for note, councillor Aminy actually sent in an email that said, he wasn't here tonight, so he said we should approve it, so... Oh, we have a second table? Yeah, we need to take it off the table first, sorry. You want to make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity off the table.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, off the table, motion.
Motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
So a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on it from anybody? Roll call.
Councillor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Aminy absent.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes. No emergency on that, councillor Net, right? Okay. We had some old business, I think, councillor Chakoudas.
Yeah. A motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second on it.
Second.
Just for note, councillor Aminy actually sent in an email that said, he wasn't here tonight, so he said we should approve it, so... Oh, we have a second table? Yeah, we need to take it off the table first, sorry. You want to make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity off the table.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, off the table, motion.
Motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
So a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on it from anybody? Roll call.
Councillor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Aminy absent.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes. No emergency on that, councillor Net, right? Okay. We had some old business, I think, councillor Chakoudas.
Yeah. A motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second on it.
Second.
Just for note, councillor Aminy actually sent in an email that said, he wasn't here tonight, so he said we should approve it, so... Oh, we have a second table? Yeah, we need to take it off the table first, sorry. You want to make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity off the table.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, off the table, motion.
Motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
So a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on it from anybody? Roll call.
Councillor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Aminy absent.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes. No emergency on that, councillor Net, right? Okay. We had some old business, I think, councillor Chakoudas.
Yeah. A motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second on it.
Second.
Just for note, councillor Aminy actually sent in an email that said, he wasn't here tonight, so he said we should approve it, so... Oh, we have a second table? Yeah, we need to take it off the table first, sorry. You want to make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity off the table.
Now we have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, off the table, motion.
Motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
So a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on it from anybody? Roll call.
Councillor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Aminy absent.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes. No emergency on that, councillor Net, right? Okay. We had some old business, I think, councillor Chakoudas.
Yeah. A motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second on it.
Second.
Just for note, councillor Aminy actually sent in an email that said, he wasn't here tonight, so he said we should approve it, so... Oh, we have a second table? Yeah, we need to take it off the table first, sorry. You want to make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity off the table.
Now we have a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, off the table, motion.
Motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
So a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on it from anybody? Roll call.
Councillor Allenson.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Field.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Mathieu.
Yes.
Yes, councillor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Aminy absent.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Net.
Yes.
Yes, councillor Walsh.
Yes. No emergency on that, councillor Net, right? Okay. We had some old business, I think, councillor Chakoudas.
Yeah. A motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Purity for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
So a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on it from anybody?
Ready?
Yep.
The call, the Tuesday, November 25th Council to order, please, roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg.
Present.
Present. Counselor Chakoudas.
Present.
Present. Counselor Field.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hogan.
Present.
Present. Counselor Lapierre.
Present.
Present. Counselor Matul.
Present.
Present. Counselor McLean.
Present.
Present. Counselor Meany. Absent. Counselor Mejimandre.
Present.
Present. Counselor Net.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Present. We all rise for a moment of silence, follow by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Keep in mind, Mr. President, the Horahan family.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal. Do we not accept the minutes from the last meeting?
No.
We don't need them. Okay, good. Communications.
We have no communications.
Public hearings.
We have no public hearings.
Public hearings to be set down.
We have no hearings to set down.
Rolling right along here. Committees licensing Counselor Field.
Thank you. Mr. President, we have unanimous vote by our committee. I make a motion to approve that.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public property, Counselor Chakoudas.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ways and Means, Counselor Net.
Mr. President, al d'ign, unanimous vote of the committee, I make a motion to approve. Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
It was seconded. The clerk, please read transfers.
Here we have certified orders, $20,000, the burn grant to the police department to fund the crowd control equipment, $25,565.40 from Mass Hire Grant to the school department for North Shore youth to gain work experience, $268,088.43 to the school department, the FY26 HVAC and heat pump training at LVTI. The following orders: Order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Lynn Police Department hereby accepts a gift from the Payone Charitable Trust in the amount of $300 to be used for their upcoming community holiday party. And Order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, City of Lynn hereby accepts a gift of $2,000 to purchase two park benches at Goldfish Pond.
Okay, it's the wish of the council. We motion approve. Second, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Matul.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany absent. Counselor Mejimandre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes. No emergency on that, Counselor Net, right? Okay. We had some old business, I think, Counselor Chakoudas.
Yeah, a motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Perty for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second on it.
Second.
Just for note, Counselor Meany actually sent in an email that said, he wasn't here tonight, so he said we should approve it, so. Oh, we have to take it off the table? Yeah, so we need to take it off the table first, sorry. You want to make a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Perty off the table.
Now, we have motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Off the table, motion.
Motion to grant petition of John Marshall Levin Vieira Dry Perty for permission to build necessary structure on his property that is partially in Lynn.
So a motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion on it from anybody? Roll call.
Counselor Allen Sugg.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Field.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Matul.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Meany absent. Counselor Mejimandre.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh.
Yes. Carries. And Mr. Marshall's in the audience. You can just reach out to the building department and maybe the clerk's office next week. All right? Thank you. Yep. Any other old business from anybody? New business. I think we have an update. Joseph's here tonight, right? Want to come on up? Why don't you give us an update about the American Rescue Plan Act? You're good. We have that.
Yes, we have it.
Thank you.
Yes. There might be one or two edits on this one, but I'll point those out. All right, good evening, everyone.
Evening, Joe.
Evening.
All right, so I'm just going to give a pretty brief update on our ARPA implementation. As you recall, we received these ARPA funds back in 2021, and next year, December 31st, 2026, is when we have to have these funds fully expended, those $75 million in COVID relief funds. So last year, on December 31st, you may remember, we hit our obligation deadline, which means that from that point forward, no new projects were allocated any funds. We had fully committed that $75 million. And so from that point until next December 31st, we are in the kind of expenditure period. And you may recall this dashboard that we update on a quarterly basis. So right now, you'll see here, of the $75 million, we have spent a total of $60 million. That puts us at 80% complete, and there's a $15 million remaining encumbrance to a wide variety of city projects and subrecipient projects to our nonprofit partners, which means we have 20% to go. I know $15 million might seem like a large number. I'm going to skip to the next one here. But this is some comparative data. If we look at where we were at at this point last year, so October 2024, we had spent about 53%, and so we've increased that to 80% complete at this point. From that time until now, so over the course of the past year, we've spent $20 million in these ARPA funds. So while $15 million is still a very large number, and there's a long way to go, we are situated in a good place to comply with that federal deadline. And just kind of a quick breakdown of those remaining $15 million. You, at this point, already know, I think, that we have these city projects and subrecipient projects where funds were regranted to nonprofit partners. About 5.2 million is still in these city projects, the bulk of that being projects managed by ISD. So there's going to be parks improvements projects that still have money in them to spend down, and the HVAC upgrades in the public buildings, which at that point, or sorry, this was, all this data was pulled about a month ago, and I'm happy to say that with the HVAC projects, that's actually been spent down since then. So it's actually even less than this. And then on the subrecipient side, there's about 9.8 million, and that is, you know, that is quite a bit. But when you kind of look at the breakdown there, a lot of this is going into some bigger housing projects, and we have these scheduled closings, so we have, you know, an idea of when this money will be spent down. A couple million to Elhand for the Lynn Armory project and the Hennessy House project on Andrew Street. And then there is another million dollar project that we just closed on with Two Life Communities for 500 Lynnfield Street. And then this also, this 9.8 million number includes the money that we've allocated to Lynn Water and Sewer, about 3.5 million remaining there, and then about 1.3 in other subrecipient agreements. All right, so quite a few dates here. This is just kind of a timeline of what 2026 will look like up until we reach that end of ARPA. So by January 1st, we're going to be sending out some updated guidance and internal expenditure deadlines to subrecipients. They will then have to have all of their invoicing and documentation fully submitted to us for, you know, final reimbursement by July 1st, with, you know, certain exception groups that have scheduled invoicing through the end of the year. And then there will be updated guidance to city departments and all vendors being sent out by July 1, and that's going to require them to submit all final invoicing for processing by October 15th, 2026, so that all of this to remain compliant will be the final deadline. And while we are not allocating any new funds to new projects, there are some, at least on the city side, we're not doing this with subrecipients, but on the city side, there are some transfers between projects when there are particular overages or shortages. And, you know, whenever those are over a certain threshold, there would be a notification. And... Yeah, that's, oh, sorry. There's 160 accounts that we'll be doing that with. Daniel, did you want to say anything else about that one there? All right, so that's kind of the main update there. And then just as a sort of end here, I'll highlight a couple of those improvements that we've seen through ARPA funds in the city. So as you know, we've put $18 million into a wide variety of parks improvements projects, so we're included here. We've purchased over $1 million in new vehicles and equipment for the DPW, as well as two new fire trucks for the fire department. And through the subrecipient grant program that we ran, we helped Leo build their new preschool on Broad Street. That was completed in the spring. And this is kind of a breakdown of all those affordable housing projects, some of which were allocated directly through ARPA, and then many of these here allocated through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which was granted seed funding through the general ARPA fund. So lots of... A lot of these projects have already closed or are in the process of closing, and we'll see some more progress throughout 2026 to be able to report on. And that's that. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the council? Counsel Almison?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. I know you mentioned, did you put the slide for nonprofit organizations?
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, there we go.
All right. So these are the nonprofit organizations that received ARPA money. I know I mentioned this to you before, and I know they have until December 31, 2026. And I'm pretty sure this will not be your last report, correct?
Correct.
It is my hope that the next time you come here, you can bring one or two of these nonprofit organizations to give us an update about how they use the money. And maybe in the website also, you can also show how they spend the money. I know there's a, the application processes, they put their wish list there, but it would be also important for us to see if how they use the money and how, if they're really following what they applied for. That is my question and wish list, Mr. President. Thank you.
Sure. Yep, absolutely. Thank you. And I'll mention as well that in the city budget every year, there is an appendix that includes the breakdown of all of the specific projects that these nonprofit subrecipients are working on and what those allocations specifically are. So, you know, some were granted more funds than others, some are capital projects, et cetera. But yes, I'd be happy to bring someone along next time. And if there's anyone in particular you'd like to hear from, please let me know, and I'd be happy to... Sorry?
You decide.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Any other questions from the council? Counsel Lapierre.
Just for clarity, maybe clarification, but I don't see GAR, the Grand Army of Reparations. I know we did elevator and extensive repairs. Is that under a different capital improvement line item?
Yeah, yeah. Great question. So the GAR building is owned by the city, so that's a project that is managed by ISD and a wide variety of partners. The Friends of the GAR is a nonprofit, but they were not the ones that sort of directly received the funds and are managing that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the council? Counsel Field?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of comments. Thank you, Joey, for coming before our council and updating us again. Just looking at the nonprofit list, I know many of us have been to many of these locations and seen the fruits of the labor from the ARPA funding. You know, one example that I'm just looking at on the screen in the Haven Project, we're looking at 565 units of affordable housing total, and we'll see more of that over the next year with ground breakings at the Two Life Community on Lynnfield Street, and then the Armory that we just had an update from Mr. Whedon from Lynn Housing and Neighborhood Development just a meeting ago. So everything that we've seen so far, including public projects like the parks that Joey posted, how well-used McManus Field is now, that it's a turf field. So, you know, these votes that we took years in the past are all coming to fruition. We still have a couple of big projects that'll be, you know, shovel in the ground within the next month or so. So it's an exciting time certainly for our city. And I think working with the mayor's office and all the other departments in the city, which is a well-done project, and I'm happy that we were all part of that.
Great. All right. Anyone else from the council? All right. Thank you for coming up tonight. Appreciate it. Thanks for the time.
Thank you all.
We have some other new business.
We have an order. Let me to read it.
Yep, read the order.
Okay. Whereas there exists areas of blight in Lynn, particularly at or near the waterfront abutting the Lynnway, that are detrimental to the health, safety, morals, welfare, and sound growth of the Lynn community. Whereas the city desires to eliminate these blighted areas in Lynn, particularly at or near the waterfront abutting the Lynnway, whereas the Lynn Economic Development and Industrial Corporation has the experienced staffing and skillset to oversee an urban renewal project of a blighted area and has so overseen such projects along the Lynnway in the past. Now therefore, it is intention of the Lynn City Council to create a redevelopment authority in the City of Lynn. Having determined that there is a need for redevelopment authority in the City of Lynn for the purpose of engaging in urban renewal projects or other work under Mass General Laws, Chapter 121B, and that it is in the public interest that such authority be organized, is hereby ordered that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 121B, Section 4, the City of Lynn Redevelopment Authority is hereby established. Further ordered that the City Solicitor's Office request a certificate of organization for the City of Lynn Redevelopment Authority from the Carmouth and Massachusetts Secretary of State's office. Further ordered that pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 121B, Section 50, the City of Lynn Redevelopment Authority shall delegate its powers for specific urban renewal projects to the Lynn Economic Development and Industrial Corporation. Further ordered that the City Solicitor's Office is hereby authorized to draft, and his honor, the mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to further purpose of these orders.
All right. Counselor Chakoudas.
Motion to grant.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All right. I'd like to have Aaron, the city planner, come up just to give an overview on this, if that's good. How you doing, Aaron?
Very good. Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, Aaron Klaassen, the principal planner, for the record. As you all know, we adopted collectively, and you all endorsed, the comprehensive plan in 2023 that laid out a vision for the future of the city, particular land use redevelopment, identifying the waterfront area as a transformed district, an area that we prioritize for redevelopment, but also an area that we're looking to transform the nature of it in that redevelopment. Slowly after, or shortly after that adoption, the city went after funding from the state to sort of further that effort through the South Harbor Implementation Plan, called SHIP for short. We just finished that a little over a year ago, but that laid out a more detailed vision for redevelopment on the waterfront, a land use and development strategy and framework, a street network and transportation infrastructure that would be necessary to support that. And over the last year, we've seen a lot of progress on that front. We've seen private investment on the waterfront with the shipyard just opening up with over, or nearly 300 residential units. We know that the Samuels Project at 830 Lynnway is going through the entitlement phase now for 850 units of housing, open space, and retail. Consistent with that plan, we're seeing that private investment. Publicly, the city just opened up Lynn Harbor Park, over nearly a 30-acre waterfront park, again, consistent with those planning efforts. Investments in infrastructure, like on Hanson Street, reconstructing that to support and improve access to the waterfront to the community. So we're seeing a lot of great momentum and change in this early phase of the work. That's in no small part in the collaboration that has been playing out, both with the city through EDIC, planning, the mayor's office, and city council, you know, particularly Counsel Fred Hogan and yourself, Counselor Walsh, in sort of shepherding that redevelopment, consistent with that planning effort. But we've also run up against some significant barriers in that. We have these properties that are stuck, we're calling stuck, essentially the National Grid property, several properties, but so they're all sort of obliterated in that central waterfront area, where we've been working hard to collaborate with National Grid to identify a strategy for developing their properties to more productive use, particularly given that we're looking at economic development, commercial construction, job creation in those areas. And we haven't really had any success in that movement. The second property is the Gear Works, and we're all very familiar with that. That property owner has been entitled for redevelopment since 2017. No action has taken place on that approval. We've engaged with them over the last years, often on a monthly basis, to see that property move forward, and we're finding that we're in a position where we're stuck. And this urban renewal authority and the next steps, if that's adopted, is a significant tool for us as a community to help force the issue be intentional and aggressive in redeveloping these properties, consistent with these planning efforts that we've all done. So we're, I'm here to, you know, support this request, this resolution to establish the authority. And what it does is it would create the authority that would give us the ability to create an urban renewal plan itself. So there's more planning that goes into this, more opportunity for public engagement to inform that planning process. That plan would have to be approved by the city council in the future, be approved by, with EDIC's support in creating that, approved by the planning board, and ultimately approved by the state. So there's a lot of engagement and oversight in this planning process, and it would give us the ability to pursue eminent domain takings of these properties for economic development purposes. And the goal is not necessarily for the city to take the land. The goal is for this tool to initiate and facilitate redevelopment of these two key properties that are significant in size. Gear Works, again, about 60 acres. National Grid properties altogether is pretty close to 60 acres as well. So this is an important tool for the city to continue this momentum, this positive momentum that we're seeing on the waterfront, and respectfully request that you approve the resolution to keep this moving.
All right.
Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council here tonight? Counselor McLean?
I just want some clarity. Aaron, you're saying the reason why you were asking for this order is because you want to move forward with development on the National Grid property over by Harbor Park and whatever, what else? What other property is it?
The Gear Works site, yeah.
The Gear Works property. So this is just because you haven't had any communication with these people, and you would like to sort of get some of that communication from them?
Well, we've had lots of communication with both the property owners, both National Grid and Gear Works. The problem is that that's not facilitating any motion towards redevelopment of those properties. We've changed zoning through the work with you all in this past summer, establishing the regulatory environment that really incents redevelopment. It allows for dense development that's transit-oriented, that's consistent with the plans, but this engagement has not resulted in any movement. So this is, having a redevelopment authority gives us the ability to create an urban renewal plan and potentially take the property for economic development purposes. That tool is very important to make sure that the property owners are willing partners in seeing that property be developed.
One more question. Counsel Hogan?
Just to make it real clear, Aaron, the word urban renewal shakes the city a little bit, just because years ago. Just to make it real clear, we're not looking at any residential properties, and you can just elaborate on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's a great point, Counselor Hogan. Urban renewal is a tool that's been around for a long time, since the 60s and 70s. It has been utilized in the city here. Most recently, I think, early 70s was the last time there was an urban renewal authority and a plan. It does have a checkered pass across the country, particularly around issues around displacement. This process has two components, to your point. One, there is going to be lots of community engagement in developing that strategy, so that the community has a voice in creating that plan and that strategy. And the second point, to begin more specifically what you're bringing up, Gear Works is a vacant property. There's no residential properties there now or any use on those sites. And then the National Grid properties, generally speaking, are underutilized or not utilized by National Grid anymore. We're talking about a property where they tore down the Boyd's Potato Chip Factory and are using it for stockpiling soil and material. There's a much better use that we see for the future of those properties that does not entail any displacement of residents or businesses on those two places.
Just so everyone understands too, what he's talking about, the Boyd's Potato Site and the National Grid Site, how they do these pop-up contractor yards on us, and we have no control over that. And to me, as a ward council in that area, it's a slap in our face when National Grid just pops up and starts dumping dirt there and stuff like that there. So we want the message real clear to these people that are holding on to these lands and that it's going to make them messy and make our city messy, that, you know, we're not going to be putting up with this anymore, and we're going to make and take action, what we have to do to make sure this is not done the way it's been going.
Yep. If I just could have been add something to that real quick, and Aaron, maybe you can just tell me if I'm wrong, but I mean, a lot of the times in a city like Lynn, we're always at these budget things and looking for money and stuff, and a lot of our money comes in from tax revenue, right? And these properties are what I would call idle. They're paying minimal taxes on them. They've been doing it for years. In a lot of ways, some of these properties are being land-banked for future, you know, probably profits by the people that own those properties. So they're just sitting on them. They take money, they leave cash behind it, they leave it, and they sit on them. So we get minimal tax revenue out of these properties. And I know in a lot of the discussions we've been at over time, we're trying to figure out ways to generate revenue in the city, and there isn't a lot of land available in the city. And we continue to talk about trying to generate that type of revenue. This is the opportunity that we need to take to do that. Am I wrong to say that, or?
No, you're not wrong. And in fact, just again, going back to the framework, the development framework envisioned in, development was really seeking to address three key issues that the community raised in that planning process. More housing, more affordable housing, more jobs, and a stronger tax base, so that the city has more revenue to deliver on resources and services and programs. All these properties are underutilized. That means they're not assessed at the opportunity. They're assessed at their current use. And so every day, every year that they go there undeveloped, they're not contributing to the tax base of the city. They're not contributing to the services that could deliver to residents and businesses. So you're absolutely right. This is a tool to give us the ability to initiate and facilitate a more proactive conversation with these property owners. Again, Gear Works, 60-acre site, that's probably, you know, a billion-dollar development. You know, that's a significant investment. know, that's a significant investment in our community. National Grid is a similar-sized, similar-scaled kind of a project, so absolutely, the, the more that these just sit and do nothing for our community, it impacts the tax revenue, impacts services, impacts housing, and access to jobs. So it's an important tool for us to advance all of those issues.
All right, I think Council, Alpia had a-
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment, what I see this as, you know, we're not ready to club the baby sale just yet. However, this resolution puts the club directly in our hands, and, you know, it's a wake-up call. We're tired of places like the gear plant being vacant for as long as my tenure on the council, which is 10 years now. We've been talking about potential proposals, and nothing seems to come to fruition. And similarly, National Grid, who I'm no fan of, and haven't been a fan of for a very long time, and we've gone through this historically with the power lines, and, and I know it's a separate division, but just with skyrocketing utility bills, we've had these folks before this council looking for answers. So for them to not be cooperating with us, you know, I hate to use such a graphic reference, but we have the club. If this resolution is our club at this point, you know, let's make it work, and let's do this on our terms. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other nondescript?
Yeah, sorry. Grass taff. We're bringing it home.
Just thinking of the little, look at like some lies.
Bam, bam.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Mr. President, just a quick question about the, Aaron, for the Lynn Redevelopment Authority, can you just speak a little bit, is it just going to be like EDIC that's going to be on that, will there be a committee, like who will, will be serving on that? And how would those people decide?
Yeah, and this resolution, we're, we're looking to essentially assign the, the EDIC Board to be the, the board that is the authority for, for redevelopment. And as, as you read and, or heard in the, in the whereas statement of the resolution, you know, EDIC has strong history and capacity around this work, the, the power lines are a great example of that, that, that went through an imminent, imminent domain taking, and without the relocation of those power lines, we wouldn't be talking about redevelopment on the waterfront at all. So they have a great track record and, and capacity to, to carry that out.
Okay, thank you, but is there a possibility to have like a community member sit on that board as well with the EDIC, or no?
The, the EDIC Board is seated by community members.
Oh, okay.
I have a question.
Council, McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that, you know, this sounds like it's been discussed, I'm, I'm wanting, I want to know, what are you all thinking of building over there? Because it sounds like there has been ideas, and this is something that you really want to do, I mean, what kinds of structures or green space, or what are you thinking?
Yeah, it's a great question. So the, on the Gear Works site, the, the best place I can point you to is, is envisioned Lynn, there was the concept that you, to, the consultant working with the city, put together. It's a mixed-use project, we envisioned it to have housing, commercial, maybe some office space, but also manufacturing and R and D. We really see it as a neighborhood that brings both housing and economic development. They put together a scheme that could create over 2 million square feet of development, both housing and, and commercial. So that's a substantial transit-oriented development opportunity for the city. That, that also sort of envisions the River workstation, it's a flag stop right now on the commuter, commuter rail line, to be a fully accessible transit stop for the community. So that's a, it's a, it's a big TOD project there, completely mixed-use. On the National Grid side of things, we're looking at more straight-up industrial, commercial, particularly maritime-related industrial uses because of its proximity to the federal channel, because it's in the DPA or parts of it in the DPA. And then also you think about the historic land uses over there, I mean, you had a gas, gasification plant, there is contamination on the, on the site. So we see this, though, again, based on the South Harbor Implementation Plan, as an opportunity to grow job creation. So whether it's manufacturing, fabrication, research and development in life science, clean tech, maybe connecting it up with marine and maritime kinds of uses, there's a lot of interest and investment at the state level on this front, so it's a really good opportunity for us to grow jobs. So they're a little bit different in approach. Again, the Gear Works is more of a mixed-use across the board, a little bit of everything in the kitchen sink there, but on the National Grid side, really focusing on job creation, industrial, research involvement.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the council? Thank you, Aaron, appreciate it.
And, and just one last thing, sorry, but as I mentioned earlier, there's more planning that'll go into this, that, so the next step would be-
I was, I was thinking to myself that you were saying the community would be involved in all of that, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
I wasn't going to go into asking how that would happen, because we're not there yet, so.
Correct.
But I, I am taking that into consideration.
And, and this is the strategies and the reuse, that's where we can delve into more detail and what that actually looks like and how that comes about.
All right, thank you so much, Aaron.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion on the order? Roll call.
Council, Alvinson?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Field?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Hogan?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Matul?
Yes.
Yes, Council, McLean?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Miniapsin?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council, Walsh?
Yes. Order carries. Any other new business from anybody? Council, McLean?
I just wanted to mention that downtown, the Lynn Main Streets has been hanging string lights, and they look wonderful. I don't know if anyone's been down there, where Union Street, by the, the museum, all that, it looks great. And I just wanted to say that we could use that type of lighting year-round would be good, and the whole Union Street Strip. I, I noticed that by Estefanies and a little bit in front of the Walgreens there on One Joy Street. It's dark, it's like really dark when you go down the street, but the other side of the street is well-lit. And I know Lynn Main Streets was the one that did that lighting, but I'm wondering if we can have someone maybe from the DPW or ISD or planning come and talk to us about how we can get that extended to the rest of the street, so that the whole street. And, you know, the lighting in our city, our city in general could use some help, so if somebody that can talk to how you can report a light, a street light being out, that would also be amazing. So I, I want to make a motion for a city department to come to our next meeting, to talk to us about how we can better increase the lighting.
But Daniel's standing up, he's ready to jump out of the seat because he's got some things for you here, and he was all excited, so.
I will second.
Hi, Daniel, how are you? Come on up.
I think those are great questions, and we had, the city had collaborated with Lynn Main Streets, the TDI fellow to decorate those, a number of the streets downtown, so ISD, or the Capital Projects team actually installed all of the, the string lighting. So we are, we've gotten great feedback thus far, so certainly interested in extending it separately on the streetlights. They, we had recently done a walk throughout the downtown with the ISD Commissioner, and he took note of all of the areas in which there are streetlights out and such. So I know that they're working on replacing all the bulbs. Some of them are backordered, so it might take some time, but as, as you know, we do have C Click Fix, and we would encourage anyone to report the streetlights, and we are certainly trying to improve the lighting and accessibility.
Okay, so C Click Fix can be used for streetlights?
Yes.
Be repaired?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
See, that, that was quick. We fixed it anyway, yeah. Not so sure the lights will get fixed that quick, but we-
Right.
We got some answers right away. Council, Alvinson?
At least we have an answer.
I would like to echo Councilor McLean's observation. When I first saw it, I was so excited, you know, growing up in the Philippines, it was like a fiesta atmosphere, right? When we have celebrations, I was driving around downtown the whole time. I called Natasha, I said, "This is amazing, this is just beautiful."
It is.
And then when I got, get to the, the post office, there's like rows of their lights with, it's not working anymore, so that leads to my question also, and I'm not sure if Daniel mentioned, mentioned that for maintenance purpose, I wish it could continue, especially the holiday season. It invites a lot of people to downtown and that area of the city. Congratulations.
Thank you, Lynn Main Streets.
Yep, good job. Anyone else on the council, anything else? Council, Net?
That's you, Mr. President.
A motion to adjourn? Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.[1770.22]